Uh, you ready to go, Rich?
Yes.
We will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 14th. And please join me as we give the salute to our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rich, are you aware of any changes to the agenda?
I think the only thing with the agenda that I want to highlight is agenda item four E is the Finance Committee meeting, budget considerations. There was a document that was updated and another document was added to that today. We sent an email out to the board in afternoon to alert them to that, but I'll walk through those documents if they agree to it. There isn't any action on any of those items.
Very good. Make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave to approve our agenda. Questions on it? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Action or the agenda is good. So next, of course.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the ready of a meeting held on October 24th, 2022, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion from Jennifer, seconded by Dave to approve minutes from a previous meeting. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Minutes are approved. Vouchers is P.
I would move to approve the general checking account vouchers totaling $1,274,755.70 and building fund 49 vouchers totaling $216,979.79 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Dave, seconded by Mike to approve our general checking vouchers, as you heard, and building fund vouchers. Questions on those? All in favor of approval signify with aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Vouchers are approved. Student council, welcome ladies.
Last week Wednesday, the high school had an annual blood drive that was a success. We had a total of 57 successful donations. Each donation is equivalent to three lives saved, which brings us to a total of 171 lives saved.
And then our butter brick fundraisers were just delivered for, and those were for the junior crowd. And this year for the Milton area Chamber of Commerce, the Shine and Start Program, we're going to be doing that again this year. And so we're just going to get a couple families to sponsor and purchase gifts for around the season. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. Public comment is next. We had no one sign up, so we will skip beyond that. Superhand update, Mr. Donovan.
I have a few things to highlight here that have been going on in the district. Last week at our Veterans Day celebrations across the district on Friday, celebrating and honoring our community's servicemen and women. In addition to programs that took place at our schools, some of our Milton East third graders took a trip to the gathering place to sing for the veteran luncheon there. There's photos and videos that have been available on our district's webpage. So if folks haven't had a chance to see those, I encourage you to look at those. Some great pictures and videos from a very exciting day. Milton High School this past weekend had their musical, All Shook Up. And our congratulations to the cast and crew, to the directors, musicians, and all volunteers who made that performance possible. The talent on display was outstanding. They did a great job. I was able to attend on Friday and I thought it went really well, and I heard that it went well Saturday and Sunday, too. Milton High School student Lauren Dondeas-Lowinski was selected to perform with the Wisconsin School Music Association Honors Ensemble. So that selection was made back in the spring. That group practiced over the summer. Lauren had applied and auditioned for the program. The Honor Assembly performed at the Wisconsin State Music Conference back in October, and that performance is going to be broadcast on Wisconsin Public Television on Thanksgiving Day. So congratulations to Lauren for that. At Milton Middle School, their unified, or excuse me, their unity team took part in a unified bowling event. That's part of the Unified Champion School Program through the Special Olympics. And it's an opportunity for unity team members to promote acceptance, unity, understanding, and inclusion for all students, regardless of their abilities or disabilities. And over the course of the school year, the unity team, members and advisors, look for ways to expand opportunities to experience different things themselves, but also to educate other students and community members. So some exciting things going on there. At Northside, Mr. Gerard, or excuse me, Ms. Gerard's Northsiders are looking for community donations to their take apart cart. And it's a way to incorporate elements of science, engineering, technology, and art. And the students use tools to take apart old electronics that are donated and then turn the pieces from those electronics into e-waste sculptures. Donations to the cart can be dropped off at Northside. But I want to make sure that folks who are thinking about donating something know that Northside can't accept items that are not eligible for standard recycling, like microwaves, TVs, thin laptops, power tools, vacuum cleaners, et cetera. So don't drop off things like that. But if you're not sure if something fits within the system, you can contact Northside and they can help you out with that. And then lastly, we had earlier, back in October, our Wall of Honor celebration. We're beginning to work on a wall of honor inductees for the coming year. That induction ceremony will take place to coincide with homecoming this coming fall. So it's nearly a year away. But we're looking for volunteers to be part of the selection committee and also for nominations for graduates, former staff members, or community members that have played a significant role in the school district of Milton or have gone on to great things after graduation from Milton High School. So if folks are interested in being part of the selection committee, they should contact Carrie Cleba. Or if they're looking for ways to nominate someone, that information is available on our website, but they can also contact Carrie Cleba with any questions that they have.
Very good. Any questions for Rich on all the great things happening in our school district? Thanks, Rich. We will move on. Next up, committee reports versus policy, Mr. Mullin.
Okay, thank you, Joe. The Policy Committee met on November 2nd. First item on our agenda was the first reading of NEOLA and other policy updates. As always, the draft updates are included in board docs. Most of these up for first reading are either in volumes 30.2 and 31.1 of the updates. Policies 3216 and 4216, Staff Dress and Grooming, state that staff must dress in a way to promote a professional educational atmosphere. Policies 3230 and 4230, Ethics and Conflict of Interest, cite Wisconsin Statute 946.13, which states that staff should avoid any personal financial conflict of interest within their duties in the school system. Policies 7450, Property Inventory, gives the Director of Business Services the job of preparing and maintaining an inventory of all district-owned equipment and supplies, including computing devices. Policy 9500, Relations with Educational Institutions and Organizations, gives the district administrator the authorization to coordinate research with individuals or institutions. Any participation in the given research would, of course, be optional. Policy 7100, Facilities Planning, speaks to the importance of the district administrator to review things such as enrollment, community development, facilities, space, maintenance needs, and report on these to the board. Policy 2522, Library Media Centers, includes a large rewrite of the policy if parents or district residents wish to request reconsideration of the inclusion of specific material in its school library. Policy states that this should be first taken up with the school's library media specialists. The policy includes who would be included in a reconsideration committee if needed and the steps that committee would take to review the material. The list of first readings also includes the deletion of four policies. 144.2 is now included in 144.5, Board Member Behavior and Code Conduct. 174.2 is now included in 2261.03, District and School Report Card. 3170 and 4170 are now included in 3122, and, excuse me, 3122.01 and 4122.01, Drug-Free Workplace. Did anyone have any comments or questions about any of those up for first reading? Here you go. We move on to the next item, which was the discussion and possible approval, adoption of the second reading of the NEOLA policy updates. That list that's being brought forward tonight for approval is also included in board docs. If anyone has any questions or comments on any of those? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the policy updates as presented.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Mike, to approve and adopt the policies here for the second reading. Questions on any of the stuff that Rick mentioned? All in favor of approval signify with aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Okay, next up is the Finance Committee, who also met recently, Mr. Hoffman.
Thanks, Joe. The Finance Committee met last week on Wednesday, November 9th. There were five items on our agenda. I will give a summary of those five and then we'll circle back for questions and if there's comments that Richard Carey wants to make on the documents that were put in the second meeting, that'd be great. So the first was in regard to an offer to purchase a property that is currently owned by the district. It's not a very usable piece of property by the district, but it is owned by the district. This parcel of land, the parking lot in the back of this building, and is adjacent to the Goodrich Hall Guest House. Property owners have reached out to the district in hopes of obtaining that land. Details are still being worked out, but this should be brought to the board for approval in the near future. The next item was enrollment projections. As you know, our enrollment has decreased slightly this year, and given the enrollment in each current grade level, enrollment will continue to be on a decline. This is not unique to Milton, but is occurring in much of the state. This is important to acknowledge and keep an eye on as decrease in enrollment equates to a decrease in resources available for meeting the needs of our students. Third, Stephen Schants discussed and reviewed the 10-year long-term capital improvement plan, highlighting many of the projects that have been completed in the recent past. It is important to continually review this plan as caring for and maintaining our largest assets is an important aspect of budgetary considerations. It's also important to continue to update this 10-year plan as it allows us to transfer funds when appropriate to Fund 46, the district's Long-Term Capital Trust Fund, which we established recently. As you will recall, after five years of its establishment, money in this fund can be used for purposes that are established within the 10-year plan. Next, we talked over the fifth pillar of the district's strategic plan, the operations and facilities pillar. We discussed how establishing goals that would cover maintaining our facilities while planning for the future, as well as making sure technology is staying current and updated, would be important. We have another Finance Committee plan for November 30th, where we will discuss the goals further so we can bring our recommendations to the entire board at a later date. And finally, we discussed general budgetary considerations. As you know, we are operating this year with one-time ESSR money, which will not be available next year. As Superintendent Donovan and Carrie Bradley have shared numerous times, the gap between our available resources and our expenses continues to grow and cannot be ignored. While much is dependent on the state's biennial budget, which will be passed in 2023, it is important for us to be proactive rather than reactive. And with that, I will turn it over to Rich.
Yeah, I want to highlight a few things from the documents that are in board docs on that topic. If you can start, probably with the operating expenses pie chart. Thank you. That's perfect. A couple of things that I want to highlight, and before I walk through the information that's here, once we've adopted our current year's budget and finalized the levy for the current year, we start working on budget projections for the coming year. We look a couple of years out. The further out you look on budget projections, the more assumptions that you need to make. Mike mentioned upcoming legislative action in 2023 on the biennial budget, so that'll fill in some of the unknowns and uncertainty. But we are incorporating some new budgeting tools. Carrie Bradley, Deborah Enson, and I went to a budgeting workshop last week. And so we're working on building budget projections for the coming year and plan at the next board meeting on November 28th on bringing those budget projections to the full board. Wanted to highlight a few things as we're thinking ahead to that, and those are some things that are highlighted, both on our pie graph for expenses and a pie graph that we'll look at in a minute on revenues. As we've shared before, a large majority of our expenses as a school district, like every school district, are spent on costs of staffing, on people that we employ or we contract with. You can see from the graph that wages make up about 50% of our overall expenses in a typical year, benefits 22%, and purchase services 21%. Those purchased services include substitute teachers, so they're part of our staffing costs, our transportation costs are part of purchase services, so we contract for bus drivers. We don't employ our own bus drivers. Our nurses, who we met at our last board meeting, fall into the purchase services category. So between wages, benefits, and a portion of the purchase services, anywhere from 75 to 80% of an overall school district's expenses typically are people. You can see some other things that make up part of that. Supplies make up part of that. Paying off the debt and some fund transfers also make up parts of those expenses. And as we're putting together our planned expenses for next year, one of the things that we've been working on, and I'm going to preview it a little bit because it's related to the HR committee report that's coming up, but we've been talking a little bit about benefits, and you can see our benefits make up 22% of our overall budget. We're anticipating a 6.9% increase in our medical insurance for next year. Our rate cap that we have in place with Dean, that's been in place for a few years, and that has allowed us to have small or not see increases over the last few years in medical insurance costs. The cap goes up to 6.9% next year. While that's a much larger increase than we've had the last few years, we're fortunate that that cap is in place because districts that don't have caps in place have seen increases from 10% up to 20% over the last couple of years. When we look at that bar graph for our expenses, we know if any of those slices of the pie grow, it has an impact on the other slices. So as we're looking at a potential 6.9% increase in those medical insurance costs for next year, and the no cap on that for years down the road, we have to be planning ahead on what those increases, what impact those increases will have on our budget, both for next year and long term. And then if we look at the other graph, here's the same form, but now instead of our expenditures, it is our budgeted operating revenues for this year. You'll again see there that the largest portion is made up of one item, and most of our revenue comes from the state. The next highest are local sources through local taxes and levy. You can see 5% of our budget for this year is coming from the federal government, but the open and roll-in also plays a part. So that's one thing that we've seen has a change over the last couple of years in our revenues, as that difference between our open and roll-out students and open and roll-in students has narrowed. That has a significant impact on our budget. So that's something that we always keep an eye on for future years. The one thing that I really want to highlight, and Mike spoke to it, and it's in the starburst on the display here, is we know that $920,000 of this year's revenues, and they fall into that federal slice of the pie, are one-time COVID funds that won't be available after this year. So while we look at our operating expenses and our operating revenues for this current year, they're balanced. So we have two pies that are the same size. We anticipate that the expenditure side is going to grow. I talked about the increase in medical insurance costs, and other inflationary costs are going to cause that pie to grow, unless we make corresponding reductions elsewhere. And we know that the pie that exists right now for our money coming in, pending what happens at the state legislature, we know that that pie is going to shrink by nearly $1 million once those one-time monies are used up. So there'll be an important discussion over the next couple of months as we're looking at what does that mean for our district? What are some things that we can do to plan ahead, both for next year and for down the road? But we want to make sure that we're alert to the issues involving both our revenues coming in and our expenditures going out. And at the next board meeting on the 28th, we'll bring some scenarios around what those projections could mean for the district. Questions, thoughts on that topic?
I think the other thing that really came up in the discussion, in addition to the unchanging revenue or levy from the state, was just the external factors, though, and how difficult it is to attract and retain people. And this is in any organization, not just schools. But, you know, we have staff members who are kids we're connected to and feel, you know, recognize what they deliver, and the idea of how difficult it is to, you know, in this environment, attract and retain talent. Again, not only from pie chart to pie chart, but, you know, as you look at the external environments, it's a very competitive labor market, and, you know, how we manage the resources that we have and recognize that. We have a lot of great people that we want to keep long term. So it's a conundrum, and something certainly that we need to be thinking about. This is the start of a good discussion of that. So I guess that's not really a question or a comment, but just looking at just the overall challenges in the environment right now, it's big, I guess.
Yeah, with the issues that both Mike and I spoke to from the Finance Committee meeting, they really reinforce, as we look at our operating expenses, and what a large portion of those are made up of, of staff. Education is very, very much a people business. The most important resource that we have are the staff members that we have across our district. And the pool for available folks is getting smaller and more competitive. So you're exactly right. Exactly right, Dave, and that's something that we're going to need to consider as we make decisions moving forward.
Any other questions from the Finance Committee, any of the topics that Mike highlighted? If not, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah.
And we will move on. We will get back to Rick, who chairs our HR Committee, and give us a quick update.
Okay, thanks, Joe. The HR Committee met November 9th. We had one topic on the agenda, that's health insurance benefits and future options. This is the third year of a four-year agreement with Bean Health Insurance, which has helped to keep insurance rates in check through upper limits or caps on rate increases. As Rich had stated, the rate caps are set to rise to 6.9% to the 23, 24 year, that expire the following year, and we are anticipating significant increases in medical insurance costs. The committee has also begun an analysis of health insurance benefits from other area school districts. The Employee Benefits Advisory Group has been meeting to discuss approaches to benefits and share perspectives. Topics of the debate meetings have included the current upward trending health insurance rates and the impact of short-term and long-term preventative care on employee wellness and medical costs. The HR Committee will continue to examine these issues and report back to the board.
Very good. Questions for Rick?
Richard, Chris, do you mind taking ahead?
Nothing from Mike. So it ties in, like you had mentioned, it ties into that discussion that we had with the Finance Committee. So both the HR Committee and the Finance Committee will be working over the next few months to talk through the different items that we got on the agenda tonight. We aren't looking for any action from the board tonight, but down the road, there'll be some things that we'll have to consider. But two committees' work will be very much dependent on what happens in the other committees.
All right, very good. Thanks, Rick. Good. All right, six is new business, eight is our district nurse introduction. Julia, you want to lead that for us?
So I just wanted to welcome and officially introduce our two district nurses. This is Melissa Fort. She is our full-time nurse at elementary buildings in Northside. And Shelley Tati is our part-time nurse, who is at the high school and the middle school. So I'll let them give their background and update on their transition to the district so far.
Hello. So I'm Melissa. I am, I've been a Fort Healthcare employee for five years. I worked mainly as a house supervisor at the hospital in Fort for the last four, and am an ICU nurse and PT nurse there. So I have three children in the school district, and this opportunity came to me and was like a blessing from the heavens. So I'm very, very happy to be having a good schedule with my kids and being involved in education on a different aspect and to kind of step away from bedside and do something different. So very excited to be here, and I am very thankful for this.
I'm Shelley. Like she said, I'm going to be at the middle school and high school, and my aunt's going to be at the high school. Part-time is 25 hours per week, 5 hours per day-ish. I am also a bedside nurse prior to this, so this is new to me and I'm very excited about it. Also invested in Milton School District. My daughter is a kindergartner at Harmony. I was previously on maternity leave for quite some time, and then this felt into my lap, this opportunity, and I'm so excited to be here. I'm very excited for what this wants to come with us, and we already are working very well together. So we're excited to be here. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rich.
June, just because this is a change, not only in the person in the nursing role, but a little bit of a change in the amount of nursing time that we have, Julia, can you speak a little bit to the board about detailing the change and the reasons for the change?
Sure. So we had one of our health aides resign, and so that was kind of an opportunity to look at our allocation and take the Fort Healthcare consideration or recommendation in consideration. The reason that we had hired more health aides over more RNs was back during COVID, when we needed more physical bodies for contact tracing COVID-related activities. And so that responsibility kind of shifted a little bit as those responsibilities kind of shifted. So we knew that we were on the lower end of our RN allocation, and so we took that resignation and then reevaluated getting a part-time RN instead of a health aide. So that's kind of how the shift happened. It was because of that resignation that we kind of moved forward, so that was.
So are we still tied into Fort Healthcare?
We are.
Your body, so that we'll actually be in.
Yeah, so we're technically employed by Fort Healthcare, most of us.
I think this partnership makes so much sense. I mean, school district's expertise is healthcare, so hiring appropriate healthcare workers with the expertise of the district is a challenge, right? So relying on a partner like Fort Healthcare to bring people in who are qualified to do these things and help partner with us to gain these connections, it makes so much sense. This is just really a good synergy, I guess, between Fort Healthcare and us, so it's exciting. So it's exciting to have this deal with us.
In the past, we've had one full-time nurse in that partnership for healthcare, and she did an outstanding job. We were very happy with the work. But she also was spread very thin. When you think of all of our different schools and having, even with the assistance of the health aides, as Julia mentioned, when we look at students per nurse ratio, we were at the low end compared to a lot of districts. And Ford Healthcare recognized that, and they recommended that we add some time. So as we shared, we didn't bump up to two full-time people. But having more than the one full-time, not only gives us more time, but it also allows us to spread the two people out amongst our schools and among and around our early start time at some of our schools and our late end time at some of the other schools. So it looks like a really good model for better meet student needs across the district.
And the transition with Ford and their coordinators were really nice and seamless as they were being onboarded into the school nursing program there. They had three sub-staff that were filling the role as Brittany left and these two came on, and it was just very smooth and clean, and the support was there, and the attention to detail was there, so they're wonderful to work with.
Very good. Well, on behalf of the district, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick question before I let them go? Yep. So for the full-time person, do you have a set schedule for how much time you are at each of the buildings, or how does that work?
So we're trying to evaluate that right now, to see what's the best. I've been going to every building so far, the first two weeks that I've been here, and that would be my intention, is to be present in every building, because there are needs in every building for me to be there. So that would be my intention, but we're still kind of evaluating where the best... My office is at West, because that has the highest acuity of children needs there. So that's where my office is, but the hope is that I am able to go to all of the elementary schools and spend time at Northside.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Once again, welcoming, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and B on new business is action on 2022-23 open enrollment alternative applications.
Joe, can I share one thing real quick on that?
Yep.
Before we move forward with it. Earlier, the board had approved some updates to Policy 5113, that gives the district administrator authority to approve open enrollment ins and outs, including the alternative applications. As we were putting together the agenda for this, I neglected to let Harley know that we don't need to bring that to the board anymore. So as we have it listed as an action item for tonight, we'd like the board to go ahead and take action on it. But in the future, we wouldn't be bringing this to the board for, as an action item, because the board has given the district administrator authority to approve those ins and outs. On a quarterly basis, as the school year is going, give the board an update on the number of ins and outs, so that you're alert. For those, or if we have some really significant changes that are out of the ordinary, I could bring them more often on a quarterly basis. But I think I'd maybe plan for fall major and spring updates on each of those to the board.
That makes sense. Very good. So you want us to approve this as normal tonight, and then you won't see these regularly moving posts?
Since we posted it as an action item for the board, I think the board should approve it tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-23 open enrollment alternative applications.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve our open enrollment alternative applications as you see them. Questions on those? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Okay, miscellaneous, A is our staffing report as usual.
I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented.
I figure that.
Thank you. Motion on the floor from Jennifer, seconded by Rick, to approve our staffing report. Any questions on it? All in favor of approval of the staffing report, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Staffing report is approved. Gibson donations is B.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Jennifer, seconded by Dave, to approve our gifts and donations, which on my sheet shows $22,000 and change from our generous community. And like Jennifer mentioned, we'll extend our gratitude to all of the folks that donate to us. Questions on the donations? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Mr. Donovan, how about some meeting dates that you have on your agenda?
We have our next scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight, on Monday, November 28th. That is Monday after Thanksgiving, so and our staff are off. Our staff and our schools are off during Thanksgiving week. I know that we have some folks in the district office that are planning on taking some vacation time. So we're hoping to have the agenda for that made prepared by the Tuesday before, which would be Tuesday, November 22nd. So if you have items for the agenda, if you can get them to us by the early part of that, maybe by November 21st, so that we can get those finalized on the agenda over the rest of that holiday week. A couple of different committee meetings. The HR committee meeting on December 7th, we're hoping to have as the next HR committee meeting. Again, that's, excuse me, December 7th, as a HR committee meeting. And then Finance Committee, we had looked at November 30th as the next Finance Committee meeting. And as Kerry and I were kind of talking through the next steps in the process of planning for next year's budget, we also need a couple of policy committee meetings in early January. So we're wondering about the availability for the Policy Committee in addition to that November 30th, on January 4th and January 11th. Each of those are Wednesdays, and we've been holding those Finance Committee meetings at noon, if that still works for the different committees. And then one last thing, as we were talking earlier about the operations and facilities pillar on the strategic plan and finalizing those goals and focus areas. If we wanted to have a strategic planning committee or a joint strategic planning and finance committee meeting to finalize those, or we could bring options straight to the board. So Jennifer, that's something to have on your radar.
Sounds great.
Any thoughts or discussion or dates that I threw out that don't work from any of those committee members?
What were those policy dates again?
Policy, we don't have scheduled. We have, and I may have missed one, if I did, I apologize. Yeah, that's Finance. If I said policy, I apologize for that.
Okay.
We need to have some Finance Committee meetings in early January. So we're looking for Finance Committee, it will actually be Wednesday, November 30th, and then Wednesdays, January 4th and 11th. That's why I was getting some puzzled looks from folks in there.
Let's try again, what's the... You tell me. I explore a lot.
I can do it right in the morning for... Or like 1:00?
July 7th at 1:00. That'll work. December 7th, 1 o'clock for HR?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee and feedback on...
Those dates are fine for me.
What dates are at noon?
Is noon the best time to meet for everyone, just because it's like smacked in the middle of the day and it shoots, I mean, it shoots the whole day? Yeah.
We wouldn't have to stick to noon. I think at times Dave's checking out from his job for a while, and that time has worked well. And depending on the time of year, Joe has said that that time works for him, but I think that maybe it's depending on the time of year.
Isn't noon best for you?
It doesn't matter.
Isn't noon best for you?
30 is definitely the best time for me.
We're looking at, how about the 4th and the 11th of January?
Oh, sorry. Policy Friday?
Are we looking at hour-ish?
Yeah.
If we chunk it up like that?
Try to keep them to an hour.
I mean, if you guys are ready, I can do them at 9:00 in the morning and get them out of the way, and it doesn't distract from your other day. It doesn't matter, right? It can work out.
If noon is good for you.
The 4th at noon works, but I guess we have to...
Yeah, I thought that worked, as soon as I could tell. And the 11th?
That should work as well.
Let's just plan on that ending.
Okay. Thank you all.
All right. I don't have any more agenda.
I move with your second.
Rick and Mike, motion on second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Folks, safe travels.